It's 7:03 Wednesday, April 17th. Called a meeting of the Essex Planning Board to order. The meeting is being recorded. It's available publicly on Zoom and 1623 Studios is making a recording of the meeting for posterity. The purpose, the main purpose of tonight's meeting is to hold the hearing for articles that the Planning Board will be presenting at Annual Town Meeting on Monday, March, May 6th. So we are going to open a public hearing for that and walk through each of these seven articles that the Planning Board will be presenting. So I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I move it.
So shall we move second?
Second.
Judd, second, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My little preliminary statement here about the procedures. The Planning Board operates under the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, zoning, Chapter 30A, and the Open Meeting Law, and the Town of Essex bylaws, Chapter 6, zoning. Notification of this public hearing was published in the Gloucester Daily Times on April 1st and April 8th, 2024, and satisfies the requirement for adoption or change of zoning ordinance or bylaws found in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5. In order to conduct this hearing in the most effective manner, our process is as follows. We will consider each article under consideration for the town meeting individually. I will describe each article referencing the town meeting warrant. Next, Planning Board members will have an opportunity to ask any questions and then to provide any comments. Third, attending members from the public will have an opportunity to ask questions, which the board will answer as possible. And then fourth, the members of the public will have an opportunity to provide comment. And we'll repeat that procedure for each article as we go through. After the public hearing is closed, the board will discuss the input received and then take a roll call vote on whether they endorse each article as required by state law to make a recommendation on town meeting floor. I will be recognizing speakers and may set time limits if necessary. The Open Meeting Law requires that you provide your name and address when recognized to speak. Although we may disagree on the issues raised, everyone present in this meeting is expected to be civil to others present. Those who do not act in a civil manner or who engage in rude or disruptive behavior will be asked to leave. Please confine questions and comments specifically to the articles under consideration and to matters that are under the jurisdictions of Planning Board. In addition, we ask that citizens inform themselves of the provisions of the laws under which this board operates, particularly the Essex zoning bylaw. Copies of the zoning bylaw can be obtained through Town Hall and full town bylaws available on the town website. Copies of the applicable Massachusetts general laws can be found online at www.mass.gov and by searching for relevant sections. Any questions on that before we go right to the articles? Seeing none. The first article that the Planning Board will be presenting is Article 14, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-3.3.3.7 of the Town Zoning Bylaws, Dimensional and Density Regulations to require that all buildings have a minimum front yard setback of seven feet, as shown below, with additions in bold and deletions and strike-through, or to take any other action there too." The table is shown in the warrant and the fifth row down has dimensions of zero to 25 feet changed to seven to 25 feet. This is really a housekeeping matter. The original intent of providing the dimension of zero in the Table of Dimensional Requirements was to allow properties with buildings that had currently zero setback, because there actually are some buildings in the downtown zoning district that do not have really any front yard. If you picture the congregational church, it's immediately on the sidewalk, is an example. But in reflecting on this, we realize that any buildings that that was the case would have the opportunity to be grandfathered or to get a variance. And so in order not to appear that we would be allowing a zero-foot setback for a new construction, we're making the change to seven foot. The intent in the downtown district is still to keep small setbacks, which is why we're going to just seven feet, which is still a small setback, but it is not a zero-foot setback, putting a building right on the sidewalk. So that is the intent of what is typically, it was really a housekeeping measure and intended to restore what is the original intent of this article. That said, I don't know if the Planning Boards have any comments or questions on this? Nope. Okay. I don't, public members, any questions on this? Comment? Seeing none, we will move right along. And if the public does have comment or questions, we're going to ask that you come to the microphone because that's where you can be heard best and also recorded. So Article 15 is "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-1.3 of the Town Zoning Bylaws, Purpose and Intent by adding a more detailed information concerning purposes and intent to be furthered by the Town Zoning Bylaws, as shown below, with additions in bold and deletions in strike-through, or to take any other action there too." I'm not going to read through what's in the warrant, but it does show that our original purpose and intent was one line mainly promoting the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants of the town, and we've replaced that with a more comprehensive list that's shown with items A through K to preserve Essex as a desirable community. Val, are you there and would you be amenable to speaking to this because you had some very helpful things to share with the board on how other towns use this and why it's a good idea to have this section a little bit more detailed in the bylaw? And I do want to add before I turn it over to Val that language like this is very typical. Almost every town has something more than what we have currently, which is why we're looking to, not because other towns have it, but because of what Val's going to say, that it's a wise idea and makes sense to help the Planning Board in their effort to protect Essex as a desirable community in the way we like it. Val?
Yeah, thank you. I am saying that it's a good idea because the courts, whenever there's a question on a decision or when a board, like the Planning Board, is making a decision and they need to call out some specific circumstances related to a special permit or a variance that they're looking at, they can turn to the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw to help explain why they're addressing a certain point. And oftentimes, the courts will follow what the bylaw's intent is stating as a way to uphold the local determinations. And that's what Essex would want for itself in terms of protections as it moves forward with any kinds of controversial decisions or even as it's making regular daily decisions related to land use in the town.
Great. Thank you, Val. Appreciate your input. As a little addendum here, the qualities of Essex that are outlined in the purpose and intent here have come from numerous surveys over the years, whether by the Long Term Planning Committee, the Strategic Planning Committee, Open Space Committee, surveys and interaction that MAPC has taken as part of the bylaw update project. So this list was curated from a lot of qualities that we have gotten feedback over the years that people appreciate about Essex. Board members, any questions or comments? Members of the public, any questions, comments? All right. Moving on to Article 16, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Town Zoning Bylaws by adding a new Section 6-4.1.3, limitations on permitted uses, as shown below, or to take any other action relating there too." This article adds the language in 6-4.1.3, Section A and B, which essentially, it's kind of stating the obvious, to put it bluntly, but what it says is that if a use is not permitted by definition in the zoning bylaw, then it is not permitted. So that just makes it clear that if there is a use that is not in the bylaw, it doesn't mean it is permitted, it means it's not permitted. So this is standard language and this is really just sort of closing a loophole. Val, I don't know if you have anything else you want to add to this one?
Yep. Hi. The only thing I would add is that it doesn't prevent uses from ever being considered if it's a new, this is like, okay, let's say a new use comes to town that you are interested in. You can always amend the bylaw at town meeting to add that use in the way that you want to manage it. So it's just making sure that, as you said, the loophole is closed, but the opportunities are not.
Good point. Thank you.
Good point.
Thanks. Board members, any questions, comments? Members of the public, questions, comments? All right. Moving on. Yep.
I just want to make sure I got this straight.
Just for the recording, your name and address, please, sorry.
Gordon Thompson, 119 Weston Avenue.
Thank you.
Everything in bold is a change, correct?
Correct. The bold language is added.
And in the old bylaw, there's just that simple sentence, correct?
Which one are you talking about?
The one with the line through it. On 6-1.3, Purpose and Intent.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're on Article 16. You're back on Article 15. So correct, you're back on Article 15. 6-1.3 is the single line there with a strike-through is being deleted and then everything in bold is being added.
Okay. And that's the only thing that's being deleted from the old?
Correct. Yep.
All right.
And then in Article 16, there's actually, you'll see what's in the language for Article 16 is only bold, so there's nothing being deleted. This is just an addition. So nothing on Article 16. We'll move on to Article, sure.
Mark Lynch, 16 R. County Road. Paragraph B there, final part of that sentence, "Set forth here in for each district." As it stands currently right now, there are no new districts, so...
We have, the general use district was approved in November of town meeting and the Attorney General has approved that, so everything in the town is technically in a district now?
Right. I'm just saying there's no, well, besides what you, there's no new districts coming yet. I'm just saying, so there's only the general use district and then everything else is all other, right? As it stands now?
So for each district right now, we have a use table?
Yeah, but, okay, I guess that's what I'm confused on. How many districts are there right now?
We have two at Canova Point, we have, we have Central Canova Point, Southern Canova Point, and then we have the Downtown District.
And then the rest is?
The rest is the general use district. Anything that's not in those three little districts is general use district.
Then any other, obviously, any other districts that get, that come along later, this would hook to, because it just, it references district.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Article 17, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-4.3 of the Town Zoning Bylaws, uses requiring special permit by changing the title to Special Permit Uses and by adding a new general provision section, and by renumbering all existing sections as shown, with additions shown in bold and deletions shown in strike-through, or to take any other action relating there too." So there's a little bit of explaining to do in this article because there are strike-throughs and bold, and a lot of it is just for renumbering because the original format that we had for the bylaw just had Special Permit Uses and then immediately went into what those uses were. So we need to add another decimal into that system because we're adding another section to talk about general provisions. So looking right at the beginning here, the title of the Section 6-4.3 is changing from uses requiring special permit to special permit uses. And this is really semantics and it's just trying to keep things organized and cleaned up. So as I said, the original section just immediately jumped into listing those uses. So that's why you see 6-4.3.1 with airport struck out and general provisions added in. You will see later, further down, that airport is obviously still there, it's just been given a new number further down. And that's the same for all of the other special permit uses that are currently in the bylaw, of which there are 13 uses. So part of this is just the renumbering, which is distracting but rather meaningless is just formatting. The important material here is what's being added under general provisions. The reason for adding this material is so that when the special permit uses are listed and someone is interested in applying for one of those uses, it's very clear about the considerations that the Planning Board will want to be able to evaluate in considering and potentially issuing that special permit, and then also looking at the procedure and the steps that we'll go through. There is also additional information in the Planning Board's Rules and Regulations, which is really procedural information about how many copies you need to file and how many days you have to do certain steps. And those, those sort of rules and regulations are not being codified in the bylaw and they will continue to be found in the Rules and Regulations that the Planning Board maintains. Walking through the general provisions here, the first is authority, which just clarifies that the Planning Board is the special permit granting authority. And for the remainder of the section, we refer to, instead of the Planning Board, we refer to the special permit granting authority. The reason for this is that it is possible that either the Board of Selectment or the Zoning Board of Appeals could be designated as a special permit granting authority for a particular use. So it's cleaner to just talk about the special permit granting authority, leaving open the possibility that another board would be that authority for a particular use potentially in the future. Applications and Procedures refers to the Rules and Regulations that are published outside of the bylaw. And again, to be clear, the rules and the regulations of the special permit granting authority do not ever address uses, dimensional, anything that would normally be covered in a bylaw. Again, it's just procedural information and people can refer to that if they'd like, just to make sure. Again, the fees are associated with the special permit process are covered in the Rules and Regulations. The important part of this section is the next section, 6-4.3.1.4, is Evaluation and Decision Criteria. These are outlined here to give the Planning Board, as the special permit granting authority, the ability to require information about these different criteria that they will be able to use in their decision criteria, in their, making their decision or the recommendations. The information that's included here is meant to be comprehensive so that anything listed here could be included, but that does not require that we necessarily have that, wouldn't necessarily need to address one of these criteria if it wasn't applicable to the permit that was being applied for. So their general criteria that talk about the purpose and intent of the bylaw, not affecting the neighborhood, citing it appropriately, and that appropriate facilities will be And that the application shall ensure preservation enhancement of scenic views. And again, that's the kind of criteria that is in there as something that the Planning Board could require an applicant to address but does not necessarily need to if it's not appropriate for a particular project. So if a project wasn't visible from the street, we wouldn't even need to talk about that. Infrastructure and services is one of the, it's an important one to make sure that the traffic impacts are minimized or mitigated, the utilities are provided, and any other services that are required for a particular use are available. Environmental considerations, the proposed use shall have minimal impact on the environment, and we're also adding one that particularly in Essex, we need to be conscious of flooding and flood damage associated with climate change. Physical considerations is there sort of as an option to be able to consider the economic impact, positive or negative, particularly on town services. So the idea there is to minimize the impact on taxes, frankly. Then the article, the section on conditions talks about the fact that the special permit, when written by the Planning Board, can make recommendations or limitations on the operation of the facility as well. And then Rules and Regulations talks about basically requiring that the Planning Board continue to maintain and update the rules and regulations as part of this process. With respect to special permits, I wish I'd said this earlier, but the, what special permits offer the town is an opportunity to have a little bit more control over certain uses that could potentially be more problematic in town. And the special permit process requires the applicant to provide the information that's shown here, but also requires having a public hearing, like the one that we're having here this evening. It requires a butter notification so that if someone has applied for a special permit of some type, butters in a 300-foot radius are notified so that they can attend and participate in the public hearing. The outcome of the public hearing and the Planning Board's deliberations and discussions with the applicant is that the Planning Board writes a decision on the special permit and that decision has to be recorded by the applicant with the registry of deeds so that it is attached to the property at the registry. So it provides a little bit more control for the town to make sure that the town isn't adversely impacted by certain uses that are considered potentially more problematic than typical byright uses that are in town. So that's why we're concentrating on the special permit. This article addresses sort of a general, these general provisions that we're strengthening here. The next three articles also talk about special permits. So there's four articles on the warrant, this one and the next three that we'll be talking about that address special permits. That's all I had. Walking through the rest of the verbiage here, this is all just part of the renumbering process. So everything else that you see below, the stuff in bold there, is new bold numbers, crossed out old numbers, and all of those uses that are listed, not either in bold or in strike-through, are current special permit uses that are already in the bylaw. So none of that's changing. It's just here to renumber them. Planning Board members, any questions or comments? Members of the public, questions or comments? Please approach the microphone.
I hate this microphone with the back to the audience. Mark Lynch, 16 R. County Road. So you've said this gives the town more control, so what, first of all, what triggers a special permit?
If the use that you're applying for is listed in the bylaw as requiring a special permit, that would trigger it. So if you want to come to town and build a nursing home, you can't do that without a special permit.
Okay.
And I will also add, just so it's clear, that there's also not listed in uses requiring a special permit, but for certain, certain building types or changes in the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, people are required to get a special permit. So as an example, the building at, I believe it was 174 Western Avenue at the mezzanine gates there, when he built that additional storage building, that building and the associated driveway and the drainage swale and the water treatment areas there, that was, that was all part of a special permit, that he had to go through that process.
Okay. So in the Evaluation and Decision Criteria, I'm just curious, under the general, the general criteria listed, are those typical, or do we pull, not pull those, but are those typically used? I guess what I have trouble with is, you know, in harmony with, shall not adversely affect the neighborhood. That can be a very subjective discussion or deliberation among the board or the neighbors even. So I'm just curious as to the rationale behind those, how widely are they used in special permitting decisions? Maybe our consultant has provided that information.
Right. For special permits, this language is very typical for what many towns use. The reason that it is left kind of catch-all because it is subjective. The special permit process is a subjective process where the Planning Board has the authority to listen to the proposed design, plan, installation, whatever, and make suggestions, recommendations, and sort of negotiate, if you will, with the applicant. With the idea of being able to protect the character of the town and limit the adverse effects. So if there are positive effects, then that's something that you wouldn't necessarily want to limit.
Yeah.
But so the other thing that you need to consider as far as special permits goes is if the, if the Planning Board were to either deny a project or to write a special permit decision that was found particularly onerous, the applicant still has recourse in contesting that with the ZBA and/or appealing it to a higher authority as well. So not that we want to send people down that road, but, so yes, you're correct, that these, these guidelines are, are meant to allow the Planning Board some latitude in the hearing process and to be able to put some controls in place on a project that would make it suitable for the community.
But it is fair to say that we're expanding the process that is in place today?
I would not say that it's expanding. We're making it clear here because this process is, by virtue of the special permit granting, the special permit application process, the Planning Board pretty much already has these authorities. Because we can write the decision, and we can write the decision pretty much, even though we haven't said it in our bylaw, state law allows the Planning Board to make requirements in the special permit decision. And so the whole point of doing this was to just basically put everyone on notice about what we can ask for.
Okay. So I think that's important to note, and I think it is, you know, you're being upfront about it is a subjective process.
It is.
A subjective discussion, and I think we should be very clear on that, too.
Right. And it always has been a subjective discussion. And so part of the process, part of the reason for spelling this out is so that everyone knows that it is subjective and these are the things that we're going to be talking about. So this is really just putting all the players at the table on notice, essentially, in that Planning Board, these are the criteria that we've said that we'll talk about and applicant, these are the things that we're going to ask you about. And this is really just in the interest of, and it's a good point, Mark, that we're not adding new things, we're just sort of codifying rights, I don't want to say rights, but authorities that the special permit granting authority already has. We're making it, we're putting it down so everyone knows what the rules of the game were, I guess.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? All right. We will move on to Article 18. "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-4.3.5 of the Town Zoning Bylaws, radio, telecommunications, cellular, and television facilities, to be renumbered as 6-4-3-2-5, as shown in Article 17, as shown below, with additions shown in bold and deletions shown in strike-through, or take any action relating there too." So again, the existing language for radio, telecommunications, cellular, and television facilities is being replaced with new language for personal wireless service facilities and a new, more detailed bylaw. Again, going back to what we were just talking about in the, in the last article, a lot of the material in here is put down so that everyone is clear about the information that the Planning Board is going to be asking for in the process of reviewing a cell tower application. And I'm sorry, I'm going to call them cell towers still, but they are PWSFs and I- And I'm sorry, I'm going to call them cell towers still, but they are PWSFs and I can't make that come out of my mouth as gracefully as cell tower. Sorry, Shelley. So in, in, as part of this process, what we've done is, is establish this bylaw in, in a little bit more of a structured format where we talk, we have purpose and intent. I'm just going to jump through this and then come back to each one. And then we have definitions and applicability. And there's several pages of definitions there, specifically since this is a very technical sort of application and a lot more detail is required there. So there's definitions and applicability, location and sighting, which talks about the location within town, the sighting with, on, on a particular property, and then also the features of, of the actual physical installation itself. And so there's, yeah, so there's requirements for locating, requirements for sighting and requirements for the built facility. And then the next section is regulations and standards that outlines planning and permitting regulations and standards, operations and maintenance, planning and standards, I mean permitting and regulations and standards, and then also covers abandonment and removal. So in general, the original requirements, the two-mile setback, the height and, and those sort of physical requirements, those aren't changed. So we're not making it harder for someone to put a cell tower in town. We're not saying, oh, we're going from two miles to three miles. We're not changing any of those requirements. So the actual physical facility that could be built under the new bylaw isn't significantly different than...
One is changed.
Which, oh, sorry. The height?
The distance from 500 to 600 of, to a residential property.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, yeah. Sorry. There is, there is one change and that is the distance from, because originally it says all towers should be located a minimum of 500 feet from the nearest residential structure, but now we've changed that to 600 feet. So there is that, that is the one, one dimensional change that we, we did add. But what the, the more detailed language is intended to do is same thing we were talking about before, is, is basically putting any applicant on notice for the different criteria that we're going to be looking for and the guidelines around how to evaluate sightings. So as we went through in the, the cell tower hearing that we had a while ago, part of the process is understanding how sites, and this is an example of, of additional language in this bylaw that's going to make the process clearer for an applicant. So part of the process in the cell tower that was applied for a while ago is to explain why the site that's been chosen has been chosen because part of that is showing and being able to demonstrate that it's a unique site and that it has, and it's more advantageous site than other surrounding sites that could be considered. So that was part of the process. But that wasn't something that was spelled out in our bylaw, but it was something that the applicant had to go through nevertheless. So what the added language here does is make that process very clear from the outset. So again, this isn't so much changing our bylaw as much as it is making the process more transparent and clearer for everyone involved in the process, the applicant and the board reviewing the application. Is that, go ahead, please speak, Shelley, if you have to add to it.
Yeah. And one of the major reasons that we updated this is that our bylaw that we had is 28 years old and doesn't stay up to technology. And so as a municipality, the only authority we have in this area is the placement, construction and modification of cell tower. That's it. And so we, we took each one and built it out and brought clarification to it. We also added a section, distributed antenna systems, which are, that the board of selectmen, if it's on our right of way, on our roads, is in charge of. It's, it goes on top of telephone poles and there's small repeaters and, or not repeaters, but antennas. And we added that language that if that came, that that would be a special permit as well. So we just tried to update and also bring in maintenance and operations and certification to the requirements that the FCC has listed.
And also abandonment and removal.
Yes.
Added that so that it's clear that when a tower is no longer used, that there's a process in place for dismantling it.
And we also, didn't we have a purpose or intent, which is really important to state from the beginning, what our intentions are.
Thank you, Shelley. Board members, any questions, comments on this?
I can discuss this after, but I did find it inconsistency. I don't know if I should, if we talk about it later, but...
Is it, is it substantive?
Well, I just wanted just to point it out on page 14. In number two, co-location requirements, and you go down to C and you see that radio frequency interference, which is RFI, is spelt out. And then in D, the RFR, it's radio frequency radiation. It's just not spelt out. It's in our definitions, but it's not spelt out and it's not consistent with the one above. So that's the only...
Right. But it is in the definition.
It's in the definition.
Okay. So that, that honestly is something by the power that town meeting vested in the town clerk as far as making, what's it, Brendan, like changes for something like this that aren't substantive, it's, it's just a punctuation...
That usually comes down to numbering and such. We do have a bylaw that allows the town clerk to do numbering.
Right.
But when you're talking about changing words, you would just make that change in the motion. It's not a, it's not substantive to the extent that it would be out of scope in the motion. So when you read that motion at town meeting, you would simply say, you know, as shown in the warrant, with this minor change, and you would explain it in, in the motion. And that way you'd get it in and it would be adopted by town meeting in that fashion.
Okay. We'll do that then because it doesn't change anything. It just makes it clear because the reference to RFR is not in there, but it is in the section right above, radio frequency interference, RFI is there, but then when we reference RFR, it's not spelled out as radio frequency radiation. So we'll spell that out. Okay. Thanks, Shelley. Members of the public, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move along to the next article, which is Article 19. And what Article 19 does is adds a special permit category for adult entertainment uses. So the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-4.3 of the town's zoning bylaws related to uses allowed by special permit to add a new Section 6-4.3.2.14, adult entertainment uses as shown below or to take any other action there, too." So as I mentioned before, there are currently 13 uses in the special permit section of the bylaw. So 13 uses that require a special permit, this adult entertainment uses would be the 14th, so that's the number 14 there. So adult entertainment uses are protected by freedom of speech in the state, in the state mass general laws. So the town could never prohibit adult entertainment uses in town. So, and that's unique among other uses. So if the town so decided that Essex wanted to prohibit, I don't know, pick a use that's not adult entertainment uses, we, we could in our bylaw codify something that prohibited ice cream stands. Not that we would ever do that, but we could if we wanted to because ice cream stands aren't protected under freedom of speech. Adult entertainment uses are. So if the town does not have something in their bylaw that regulates how adult entertainment uses could be permitted in town, then there are no restrictions on it whatsoever. So seeing as that it's a use that probably merits some regulation, we're proposing language here that would spell out the requirements for an adult entertainment use if one was to come to town. And the Gloucester Times reporter asked me, have you gotten an application yet? And I said, no, we're just doing this to be preemptive. It was odd. He asked me a couple of weeks ago about, about this and I gave him a lot of information and I haven't seen an article yet and he didn't ask about any of the other articles that we have, just this one, which is quite honestly one of the most boring ones. So the, the language that's put in here follows the same format that we're trying to establish for special permit uses, which is to establish purpose and intent, Section A, Section B, definitions and applicability, C, location and sighting, D, regulations and standards, and E is other conditions, which is sort of a catchall. So purpose and intent is to protect the character of Essex, blah, blah, blah. And again, this is very typical language for towns or municipalities that do govern this. Definition and applicability talks about the different mass general laws that cover this particular use so that it's clear. Location and sighting, like every other town who writes this bylaw, we have established setbacks from other uses in town, 500 feet from a residential use, 1,000 feet from a school, religious facility, 500 feet from a park, 1,000 feet from daycare and 500 feet from retail, restaurant, or any place that sells liquor or dispenses marijuana. Regulations and standards, we address parking, signs, displays and views, lights and noise, and requiring a site plan with some added information. So this is again, listing out the criteria that we're going to be wanting to consider as part of the special permit process so that an applicant and the planning board are on the same page with what's going to be considered in the application process and potentially what will be written into a special permit. Again, the planning board can't deny a special permit without good reason and even if a special permit is denied, the applicant has the opportunity to appeal that to either local or state boards of appeal or courts. So if and when the planning board does deny an application, they may, need to make sure that they have strong footing. That would be legally defensible. Planning board members, any questions or comments? Members of the public, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll just zip right along to the last article. Article 20 is, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section 6-4.3 of the town zoning bylaws relating to uses allowed by special permit, adding the new uses that will be allowed by special permit as shown below or take any other action relating there, too." And here we add eight new categories of special permits to the special permit section that we've been talking about for the past three articles. So adding these uses to special permits means that if someone wants to open one of these types of uses in town, they would be required to go through the special permit process. And these, this list has been collected through a lot of feedback from public forums that we've held with MAPC, information that we've gotten feedback from individual members and also doing a little bit of due diligence, looking at what other regulations in, what other towns do with similar regulations. So that's how this list has come up. There, in some of our working conversations, there have been longer lists, but we've decided to pare it down to these eight categories, seeing that these probably are the ones that would be most likely to come to Essex in the foreseeable future. So we have commercial shooting ranges, commercial self-storage facilities, drive-through or drive-in establishments, event venue, retreat center or function facility, freestanding solar arrays, indoor/outdoor heavy equipment, sales or storage, composting facility, indoor/outdoor, sporting venue, indoor/outdoor. So again, the intent here is not to try to prohibit or preclude these operations in town. It's really just to go through the special permit process, which does allow very public process for how one of these uses is permitted in that we do have a public hearing, we have a butter notification, and in the process of writing a special permit, we are able to take into account considerations of how this use would affect town. So take for example, drive-through establishments is here because how that is structured, sited and where it's located can have a significant impact on traffic in town, depending on how people pull in or out. So, so something like that just gives the opportunity to make sure that the impact is minimized to the extent that's possible. And again, it bears repeating that when the planning board does write a special decision, they need to make sure that any provisions and requirements that they put into that and any other part of the decision is legally defensible and strong and would not be some, it could be upheld in court so that it's not something that could be contested. I mean, the applicant is obviously free to contest it, but it would be unwise of the planning board to write something that is too onerous, that would put the town in sort of legal jeopardy in a situation like that. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or comments on, on any of these planning board members? Members of the public? All righty. Then we're at the end of the planning board articles for spring town meeting warrant. Before I take a motion to close the hearing, Brendan has a comment.
Did you want to see if anyone online wanted to unmute? I don't know if anyone was looking to make a comment, but just to be complete?
We, we can. I have not, the, the planning board has typically allowed, provided Zoom is an opportunity for people to monitor our meetings and we haven't engaged people, but there's not that many people online, so...
Yeah. Where it's a public hearing, I would recommend that you give people an opportunity if they choose.
Okay. If there's anyone online remotely, I see several people there online. If anyone wants to unmute and ask a question, please do now. Anyone? All right. So it doesn't look like anyone has any comments, but good point, Brendan. Thank you. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
May I make a motion?
Shelley, motion second?
Second.
Judge second. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 All right. Public hearing is closed. So moving on, now that we have held the public hearing, the next item for our agenda, if I can find it here, is if there's any further board discussion. And if there's not any further board discussion, I will take a roll call vote. Teresa will be recording for each of the articles to let the planning board members weigh in on whether they would support or not each of the seven articles that we're bringing to town meeting. So we're going to do these one by one and your roll call votes going this way, if that works for you guys. And we need to do a motion and a second. No. No.
Roll call vote on whether you would support...
Yeah, so we, no, we need to take a motion. Yeah, so, okay. So, Article 14, I will take a motion for, to recommend that the planning board supports Article 14, which is the one on the downtown zoning district, and they did the front setback change. So, take a motion?
I move it.
Shelley, second?
Second.
Judge seconds. Roll call vote.
Yes. Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yeah, yes, whatever.
Aye, prove aye.
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 Aye. So, it's not really a roll call vote, it's just one by one, because roll call vote, you're supposed to state your name, but we don't need to go through that, because Teresa knows who everyone is. Article 15, which is, I think I remember these already, it's been a long day, is to amend, to update the purpose and intent in Section 6-3.1. So, I'll take a motion to recommend that the...
Let me have it.
To recommend that, to have the planning board recommend to support this article. So, Shelley moves that, second?
Second.
Judge seconds. All those, well, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Article 16, which is about limitations on permitted uses, saying that if it's not permitted, it's not permitted. So, Article 16, I'll take a motion to, for the planning board to recommend this to town meeting.
Can I move it?
Second?
Second.
Matt, beat you to it this time. All those, votes? Peter?
Aye.
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 Article 17, which is the update for special permit uses, including the general provisions outlined here. I will take a motion that the planning board recommend this to town meeting.
Moved.
Peter moves, second?
Second.
Shelley, seconds?
Aye.
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 Article 18, formerly known as the cell tower bylaw, now known as PWSF. I will take a motion that the planning board recommend this to support, support this at town meeting.
I move it.
Shelley moves, second?
Second.
Peter seconds?
Aye.
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 Article 19, on adult uses. I will take a motion to recommend to town meeting that the planning board supports this article.
Moved.
Peter moves, second?
Second.
Matt seconds?
Aye.
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 Aye. And Article 20, for new uses to the special permit section. I will take a motion to recommend to town meeting that the planning board supports this article.
Moved.
Peter moved? Second?
Second.
Shelley, seconds?
Aye.
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 Aye. That concludes this portion of our program. Thank you for attending. Planning board is going to move on to a bit more regular business, so the public is welcome to stay, but the portion of our meeting that addresses the special, the town meeting articles is, we're all set, we're done with that part now, but we're going to continue with our few items of regular business. Thank you, guys, for coming. Options and ideas for public outreach during the next steps of the bylaw update work. We will continue both of these topics at our next meeting. Our next meeting is Monday, Wednesday, May 1st, which is still before town meeting happens. But we're going to start to talk about this in a little bit more detail as far as having a schedule to look at some of the changes that we're going to be making or proposing, and laying out a schedule, talking about public engagement and things like that. So, if people want to talk about this tonight or have ideas, that's fine. If not, we're going to be also having these agenda items in two weeks from tonight.
Did we get the feedback from MAPC for...
Feedback from MAPC?
The overall...
From MAPC?
Ending, yeah. Like, the overview.
They have, we'll share that. We just got that. Brendan forwarded that, right? Did you get that? Did that come to you? Okay. Well, I just, MAPC did forward their collected volumes of material, and I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I will forward that to Teresa, and then she can, and Brendan sent, Brendan sent it to, I guess, to me and Val, I think. I'm not sure. But it's, we just got it the other day, so...
It's just hard to come up with ideas of a forum if we don't know where we're going to start, right? Like, our discussion of where we're going to start next, like, what is our intention going forward now?
MAPC?
No.
Oh, okay.
You said, "Does anyone have ideas about forums?", but we have to know what our subject matter is.
Right.
So, I guess that discussion is much longer.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to start to talk about residential zoning districts or anything that's related there, too. And so, that's going to be what we're going to need to be engaging the public with.
Right.
Just commenting that you'd asked me to come in with some recommendations at the next meeting. So, that'll give us a kind of a place to start, and you can react to those ideas and that timeline as a way to start your discussions and see if, you know, you can add to the ideas that I put forward at that meeting.
Okay. So, you say that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, on May 1st, okay. If you have any materials or anything that you want to send around ahead of time, and you want to share those with Teresa, she can distribute those with the meeting materials ahead of the meeting, like she always does, and that way, we can all look at, do our homework, and be prepared for the meeting.
Definitely. Yes.
That'd be awesome. Great. Thank you, Val. The review, the wrap-up with the MAPC, we had that discussion, and I will thank Select Chair Ruth Perrine for being her frank self and laying things on the line better than I was able to do, but I appreciate that, Ruth. Thank you for that. And again, the final documents are now in hand. Brendan just got those, so I will send those around, and we can also talk about those at the next meeting. What we obviously didn't get is anything from MAPC with maps, so we're going to be on our own for that. But we have Val, so we'll be good to go with maps. Okay. Meeting minutes from April 3rd, which Teresa sent around. I have to admit that I did not look at these ahead of time. I do have a couple of changes. I know Shelley had changes, so I think what we're going to do is not approve these tonight, but talk about your changes. I'll talk about mine. We're going to review them, and then we'll bring another, an updated one, because my comment was, it was noted that the changes to the article is made after the public hearing but before ATM. Oh, that's actually... I just want to clarify this with Brendan, because that's what I was talking about, yeah. Because...
What, what, in the scope of these?
Right, yeah, yeah. So, and Shelley, you had some comments?
Yeah. It's just, remember how we had that discussion in the cell tower bylaw about when Bill Sandborn was reviewing it, and it came to building inspector, and he corrected it to building commissioner? That's how he stated there, and I, and it was changed, and I went down...
It's not, he's not the building commissioner.
Bill Sandborn.
We don't have, our Essex bylaw creates that position as the inspector.
Oh, okay, because I went down to talk to him before this meeting, and he said, "There is no such thing as a building inspector." Like, it's a building commissioner, that, like, it's not stated, but I just wanted to, I don't know.
No, it's, it's something that we can correct in the bylaw if it's appropriate, but our bylaw establishes the position of building inspector, and that's, it's in Section 2, under personnel, in Essex zoning bylaw, as building inspector. So, that's why we call him the building inspector. We don't have a building commissioner in Essex.
Okay. And then, it's just, well, then, on just the next page, Article 14, where it's just noted Bill, it should just say, I think, building inspector. It's just informal, like, 20 years, who's going to know who built, you know, I would just state building inspector then, just to clarify and separate from the planning board members.
Yeah, I usually only do that after he's been, after a person's been referenced once. So, if he was referenced once in the building inspector's report, it says building inspector, Bill Sandborn. So, if you prefer, I can reference him as building inspector every time, but I do that with Val or Bill or whoever I reference their title once, and then just their name, but it's up to the board, however you prefer I handle it.
I think it just, it separates them from the planning board. I don't know. I don't know, it's just consistency that we should decide on. Just that it separates.
That's a decision I would defer to Simone if she was here.
Okay. That could be another. That could be another.
Why don't I ask Simone?
Gosh. Well, yeah, we can, I'm kidding about Simone, because she's not here.
Would you like me to do a little research about format regarding titles in minutes?
Sure. That's a good idea. Thank you. No, it, it...
Yeah, no, it helps.
It sounds funny, but, I mean, Teresa's here, and she's been doing a great job, and part of what we're also trying to do is curate a planning board administrative assistant. We call it the bus hit handbook, so...
If I get by a bus, what happens to all the stuff?
And eventually, we're going to want to curate one for the chair and the vice chair position so that all the duties of these respective roles are spelled out in, not in the bylaw, but maybe in our rules and regulations or the materials available so that it's clear what all the different, because there's a lot of different things that the administrative assistant does, and to spell that out is very helpful, so. Anyway, so that's, I mean, Teresa's joking about doing research, but once we standardize some of these things, then it's just information that goes in an administrative admin handbook, and it's there for.
Great.
But since we're saying this in public meeting, I will say, there's no official style guide for the town of Essex, so that is something that would be very helpful for probably all departments to standardize it.
Yeah, but we're getting there. I mean, we have online permitting, so. That's like the biggest thing ever. It's like, you know, inventing electricity or something. Okay, so we'll, we'll go over this, and we'll approve them at the next meeting. And, sorry, my papers are all scrambled here. Do we have any, we don't have it on the agenda about other meetings, but I don't think we had any. We'll put that back on for the next agenda, the other Affordable Housing Trust strategic...
No, we didn't have that.
That said, it is 8:07. I will take a motion to adjourn.
We move it?
Billy, second?
Second.
Judge second. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys should be psyched, an hour and 7 minutes. It's actually an hour and 4 minutes.